It is one o'clock on Tuesday, November 4th, and it's a regularly scheduled City Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
It is my turn to do the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you have given us. We come to DDA asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting to help us make decisions to move our community forward in a positive direction. Be with all of our citizens and give them wisdom as they go out to the polls today to vote on the future of our community. Be with our first responders and watch over them and keep them safe as they work to keep us safe and keep us in peace in our community. And as we pray, amen. Next up is the approval of the minutes. Any changes? I didn't see anything, so they'll be approved as presented. Item five is public comment. This is a time where we give you to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. We give you five minutes to speak, and when you do, come to the podium. Please state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Tammy Wilson, and I'm the Director of Big Brothers and Big Sisters. I'm going, I'm coming to you today with an urgent request for funding and for reconsideration of our recent AFAK leadership grant. Our staff and board have been working diligently to raise the funding needed to support our program needs, but now we are at a crossroads, and if we do not secure immediate funding, we will not be able to make payroll on November 15th, and our agency will close by the end of the month. This would be catastrophic for some of the most vulnerable children and youth in our community. Our budget and a thorough description of our financial status, short-term and long-term strategy plan, is included in your packet and the emails I sent to each of you on Sunday. For background, Big Brothers Big Sisters of America implemented new mandatory policies, both program and financial. These changes have drastically impacted our day-to-day operations. Financially, these changes immediately added over $35,000 to our budget. In addition, we had to move our office due to school district expansion, adding another $14,000. Those things combined with varying local grant decreases greatly affected our finances. With the mandatory program changes, all staff positions saw substantial increases in responsibility, and we are now required to meet the same criteria as large urban agencies despite having a substantially smaller staff and resources. These changes resulted in the closure of more than 100 small agencies across the country, and we don't want to lose ours. If our agency were to close, over 100 children with significant needs would immediately lose their lifeline. Some of our littles require special education and or mental health assistance. However, most of them do not qualify for our one-on-one para, and many only go to counseling once per month, if at all. We have come to you for help because the children and youth we serve are some of the most vulnerable in our community, and they are struggling. While academic assistance is important, a large number of our children are navigating trauma that impairs their ability to function. Our littles used to fall on a spectrum from those who only required homework assistance to those who had significant law enforcement involvement with their families. Increasingly, the majority of our children have experienced stress and trauma that affects their capacity to function, not only in school but in life. Many of our littles have experienced bereavement from the loss of one or both parents. We had a child who lived with his elderly grandmother and would stay awake at night to ensure her lifesaving medical devices did not malfunction because she was all he had. Emotional, sexual, or physical abuse being placed in foster care. Children as young as 10 who were experiencing, experimenting with drugs, alcohol, or vaping. Many of these substances were provided by some of their own family members. We have children living with family members who are addicted to alcohol and drugs. Many of our families live below the poverty line and struggle with food insecurity. Some are homeless. And the most alarming is that we've had an increasing number of children who've been placed on suicide watch, most of them eight to 13 years old. Last week, we added another eight-year-old to this list. It's difficult to fathom the amount of pain these children are in if their choice is to not be here at all. All of our littles count on Big Brothers Big Sisters to be there. Our volunteers are the ones who provide support between therapy appointments, court dates, or supervised parental visitations, many times when no one else does. They provide a listening ear, help with schoolwork, carry nonjudgmental support, and a different perspective. We are an essential lifeline for these children, providing consistent weekly support. Last year, we served over 360 kids in all of our programs and made 212 matches between a Supreme Supervised Trained Volunteer and a child aged five to 17. Their successes, especially in light of their circumstances, were immense. 98% demonstrated improved self-confidence. 94% were able to make better decisions. 95% improved academically. 98 were able to avoid delinquency, and 100% were able to avoid substance abuse after being matched with a big brother or big sister. These amazing kids in our community, who have placed their hope for a future in our hands, need your help. Our program is cost-effective, with each match costing less than $1,000 per child each year while yielding long-lasting results. We utilize a proven evidence-based approach that creates long-lasting changes in behavior and self-confidence. We are doing everything we can. Our board met with community leaders to help us formulate both a short-term and long-term strategy that will allow us to provide these services in the future. And there is information in your packets on that. In addition, we will be closing our office space, and staff will be working remotely. We are the only agency in this community that provides one-on-one mentoring and achieves this level of success. We have also provided you with information on the effectiveness and successes of the children in our program, including letters of support from littles and school staff. Our AFAK proposal meets the state prevention funding requirements, and we have started fulfilling the obligations in our proposal. If you could please reconsider funding the $23,000 for our agency from the AFAK budget or any other available funds. The kids in our program, from high school seniors who are graduating early to the little eight-year-olds that need some hope, will continue to have their lifeline. Our agency has been here for 41 years, changing the lives of thousands of children. This funding would meet our immediate needs and facilitate the next steps in our plan. If we don't get it, we may not be here. The littles in our community need your help. Thank you for your time. Please contact me if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Councilman. And Becca Lurkin, Garden City High School, I'm here with our Youth Engagement Group again. And I'm just kind of updating you on kind of what happened this month. We attended the last meeting, and since then have gotten more details on our plans, and I thought it would be important for you to know just some of the topics and departments they find essential. They include Parks and Rec, Neighborhood Development Services, the Fire and Hybris Department, public utilities, and projects are looking at expanding and cooperating existing programs and departments already. Green spaces, offering youth entertainment, affordable and accessible housing, and safety and security. They will not be at the next meeting, but we'll see you in December at the high school, and they will offer for you guys to come and look at the proposals later.
Okay, so well. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Emily Hamlin Deloche, and I am here today to introduce myself to you and the community in my new role. I am the CTE, Career and Technical Education Facilitator at Garden City High School. Some people have known me in other capacities. I am a 20-plus educator, with most of my years coming from Fannie County High Schools. I have served as an English teacher, a counselor. I've sponsored and coached, I don't know how many things, but I am very excited about my new opportunity and role as with Career and Technical Education. And I wanted to introduce myself in the initiatives that we are revamping and rolling out. One of the benefits I feel and the strengths that I bring to Career and Technical Education is my role and experience as a high school teacher and as a counselor, and also navigating the educational piece of graduation requirements, navigating the social-emotional aspects, and then now adding this component of how to give with the workforce, to give our students the opportunities to pay it forward, but also how to move forward and be part of like a start here, stay here mentality, or we send them off very super successful, right? Because we want Kansas kids, especially Southwest Kansas kids, to win.
That's right.
That is my goal.
That's right.
I know this because I have taught on the other side of the state. I was in the Topeka area, and I know what they are getting that our kids don't. And so it's not just about Southwest Kansas kids winning and staying, but just being super successful where they land. And so I have been rolling out over the weekend and moving forward through what I call "series." They're called buffs and community connect. I'm looking for opportunities for bringing industry and community and business professionals and volunteers to our campus. So another thing that I will, in my SAS, tell you, like, I want the opportunities for our kids, but I'm here to show you what works in our bell schedule, the transportation needs, our cultural needs. And for example, Fannie County EMS joined the very first effort with me this year, and we were able to get six students CPR certified on a non-school day, and two of them I provided transportation for, and they, because public transportation and school transportation was not running that day. So that's what I'm here to also bring, is the school part and matching our needs there. I also have, where I'm seeking, business and community volunteers to join our advisory committees. Help us know what we need to bring to the table for these students as they go out to the workforce. Because again, I know school. I know the school world. I don't necessarily know what all you need, other than like what I've been as a patron, as a community member, and that's what I'm going to throw out here, too. I know there may be lots of feelings, thoughts, that I am from Garden City. I'm a fourth-generation Garden Cityian. I'm a fourth-generation graduate of here. I am committed to Southwest Kansas. I did come back, and I am here, and I have learned a lot about community service. As a Hamlin, some of you may know my family members, and you know we have a stubborn part to us, and we'll fight, and we'll advocate, and that's what I bring to the table also. We also are looking for work-based learning experiences to meet the state auditing needs in the rollout for '26, '27, and that's also the part, working with our partners to understand the school side of it. I'm also looking to how to give back, not just to meet the intrinsic reasons why our students should be volunteering, but also on the business side of it, for our high school graduation requirements and post-secondary assets have changed. And so just building that relationship that there is intrinsic reasons, but also intrinsic, too, why to pay it forward. So I do have those initiatives. I am located at Garden City High School in what we call the Career Center, and I, it's a new big rollout. We do have two career fairs that we want to initiate also, and just getting the word out, and it's a part of like a one, three, and five-year and beyond plan. And I don't, can I leave? This is the teacher in me. May I leave this?
Yeah, you can give it to the
Okay.
Board Clerk, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You got money to pass for Robert Delion? Most of you guys know me on this board. When Tammy told me that she was going to be here to speak about Big Brothers and Big Sisters, I, I had to come. Had to come. You know the work I've done with the youth of this community, but I know the value that Big Brothers and Big Sisters brings to this community. And for us to let funding be the issue to close those doors, we can't let that happen. John, the question, I'm coming here just to say, what can we do? Let's put our brains together, put our heads together, figure out, how do we help this vital program continue to help our children? Especially after what this lady said just now about kids, students succeeding in school? A lot of our kids are not going to succeed in school without this program. And so I'm just asking, how do we help them? How do we make sure that they're, me giving your name now? I'm gonna, I'm not just going to be here speaking to you guys about it. I'm doing something about it. Just this morning, I went around and spoke to churches. Many of you belong in churches in this community, so you talk to your pastors and say, hey, Pastor, I know Pastor Robert was here talking to you. Let's get on there and give help. Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Let's do it together. Let's not let it fall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Veronica, and I'm here with Big Brothers and Big Sisters.
Veronica, we just need your last name, too, for the record.
Veronica Delgara. Twenty years ago, I was a big. When I was 18 years old, I, I was a big to a little one, and she became a big herself, and her big, her little one became a big. But 25 years later, I became a mentor, and I currently have two girls at the high school. I've seen the tremendous change in their lives, not only because I'm their mentor, but because of their personal story that they have. And I greatly believe, I've known Tammy for a very long time. She does a great job, and what she's doing in the community, as it's known, you know, it's a village. But the program does wonders, and I'm just here to just let you know that as one of the mentors out in the community, I love what I do, and like I said, it would be sad to see them close their doors.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, I just wanted to bring to your attention something really quick. I've been out of the office, so this was my way to get it to you quickly. The City Clerks and Municipal Finance Officers of Kansas provides a four-year professional development program designed to enhance knowledge, skills, and professionalism of municipal clerks and finance officers. This program is administered in partnership with Wichita State University's Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs, and I am proud to say that this year, the 2025 class, Cori Longoria is one of 22 graduates. So she graduated last Tuesday, October 28th, in Wichita, so I just wanted to bring back to your attention, she completed her four years.
All right. Thank you. I think we should get a picture with her to promote that on our social media from our fantastic communications department. He's got the camera. Let's do it. Anyone else for comment on any subject that's not on the agenda? Okay, moving on to item six A.
Don't mind, I'm gonna log back in my
Yep.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Levi Bernfond with Garden City Education Association to proclaim the week of November 17 through 21st, 2025 as American Education Week in Garden City, Kansas.
Entertain a motion on this item? So moved. There's been a motion. Is there a second? Second. There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed, and I'll read that at the beginning of the week at one of the schools in the district, so we'll take care of that later.
Item seven is the report of the city manager. You'll see a collection of department reports on there. Any questions on those? And is EMS Director Smith planned to be present for his presentation on 7D? Or is that just a written report? I'm looking for him.
I think it's just a written report.
Okay, all right.
Make it today.
Very good. Okay. We appreciate Fannie County EMS sending that report over as they serve our community, our city. Meetings of note, item 8A, those requiring RSVPs, please direct those to the city clerk's office. I'll add on there, one that, we'll still have another meeting before it happens, but the RSVPs may be helpful sooner. November 21st is the refinery grand opening. You've been invited, you and a guest have been invited to luncheon at 12:30, and then the public grand opening event is at 2:00 PM that day. So if you can put both of those on your calendar, and then the RSVP would be necessary for the lunch piece, so you can let the clerk's office know, we'll get that information off to, to the folks putting that on. All right, with that, I think we're ready for consideration of appropriation ordinance number 2598-2025A.
I approve appropriation ordinance number 2598-2025A. Is there a second? Second. There's a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a annexing land owned by the city of Garden City, commonly known as the Jarmer Waterwell property. And if approved, this would be ordinance number 3029-2025.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Background on this particular item, back in 1996, the city of Garden City entered into a 20-year lease agreement with Deborah and Roger Jarmer to drill a water well and utilize the property, which is approximately 0.9 acres, where the water well, pump house, pipelines, and easements were located. On December 9th, 2016, the city of Garden City purchased the Jarmer Waterwell property and its water rights from Deborah and Roger Jarmer for $350,000. The city already owned the water well pump, related equipment, wellhouse, and all piping. The Garden City Electric Department has provided the electric power to this water well since it was drilled and placed into service in 1996. This was considered a free service to the water department and has never been charged for the electric power consumed by the water well. Therefore, no revenue has been collected by the electric utility for the electricity consumed at this well. On January 5th, 2018, the Kansas Corporation Commission in docket number 17GDCD-370-COM approved a settlement agreement between the city of Garden City and Wheatland Electric Cooperative with the execution of a memorandum of understanding where the city and Wheatland agreed to resolve territorial disputes regarding electric service territory. The city and Wheatland worked diligently to identify which electric accounts needed to be switched to the other utility and completed the switch in 2018. However, on June 20, on June of 2025, Curtis Peterson, who's the manager of operations for Wheatland, contacted myself, Mike Beerhead, Director of Public Works and Utilities, asking if the city had ever annexed the Jarmer well property that the city was serving, which the city had not annexed. Curtis Peterson also advised me that the city was serving a tiny account at the Garden City Regional Airport where Scott auctioned hours and office trade there for about two weeks a year. Curtis Peterson also advised me that Wheatland Electric was serving a gas well on city property inside the city boundaries, which is adjacent to the Dairy Farmers of America's, or Dairy Farmers Association, DFA's plant operations. Therefore, communications between the city's legal staff and Wheatland's legal staff together have drafted an agreement that neither organization would file damages against the other for the misunderstanding of service territory rights, that Wheatland will not seek a franchise to serve the property, and that the 11-factor process will not be necessary, and that we will advise the Kansas Corporation Commission of this agreement. That agreement is, you're going to conserve that later in your agenda. However, if the governing body approves the ordinance presented today, all other aspects of KSA 66-1 on 176 will remain in effect. This means that any additional electric load that added to this particular piece of property that's considered to annex will require the city to pay Wheatland Electric 8.5% of gross revenues for the next 10 years. Your alternatives, the governing body could approve ordinance number 3029-2025, annexing into the city of Garden City property, into the city of Garden City boundaries, and adhere to the items outlined in the body of this memorandum, or the governing body could choose not to approve ordinance number 3029. Staff recommends that the governing body approve ordinance 3020 million as presented, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
I guess my question is, is, once we annex it today, does that start the clock on the 10-year? So after that 10-year period, if we do add extra load or anything to that, that negates that, that 10 years, right? Am I, am I understanding that right?
I guess, once the ordinance has been publicized and it's legally reported, then that clock starts, the 10-year process. Anything after that 10-year timeframe, then the city would not be obligated to pay Wheatland any, bring additional electric load that's put on that property.
Okay.
So, so as far as, Mike, you talked about the other properties and cleaning up everything, you know, with an agreement between Wheatlands and the city of Garden City. Does that need to be approved before the Kansas Corporation Commission? Or, or are you saying that you're going to do that afterwards, or is this part of that?
Well, we've already did all of that up.
Okay, okay.
And these are just two that was missed.
The last two, okay.
And we're wanting to clean that up, and both Wheatland and city attorney's office agreed that they could do that, and they just agree with that. You'll see a little bit of the details in your, in your
Agenda.
Good, yeah, good.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike on this item? Entertain a motion on ordinance 3029-2025.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 3029-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve annexing the Lewis Substation located at 2840 North VFW Road, and if approved, this would be ordinance number Mike?
Yes, thanks, Matt. This is a much easier annexation document. On September 13th of 2019, the city of Garden City entered into an agreement with the Wheatland Electric Cooperative and the Sunflower Electric Power Corporation for acquiring portions of Wheatland facilities and Sunflower facilities. One of the locations was the Wheatland Lewis Substation, which is located at 2840 North VFW Road. That is a one-acre tract of real property, and it's an electrical substation. The city owns the property, and it is contiguous to the city of Garden City's corporate boundaries. If the governing body approves the ordinance in front of you today, this property will come into the city's corporate boundaries, and city staff will begin the process of working with the Wheatland Electric Cooperative as required by KSA 6-1 on 176, as to who will be the retail electric service provider for this property. Your options are, you could approve the ordinance presented today, annexing the Lewis Substation located at 2840 North VFW Road, or the governing body may choose not to annex or not to approve this ordinance. Staff recommends the governing body approve the ordinance as presented.
Yeah, any questions for Mike? Entertain motion on ordinance 3030-2025.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 3030-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second? Second. There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make note that Commissioner Landgraf will be stepping down on this item.
Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential District to GC General Commercial District to G2 General Commercial District City Zoning for the property generally located at 2905 and 2915 East Mary Street and the property east of 2915 East Mary Street.
Good afternoon. H.J. Slunder Jr. is requesting to rezone the property generally located at 2905 and 2915 East Mary Street and the property east of 2915 East Mary Street from R1 Single Family Resident, Residential District and GC General Commercial District, which is the county zoning district, to C2 General Commercial District, which is the city zoning district. The property is currently vacant and contains 105.27 acres. This property is also part of the sales tax and revenue, or STARBONG district. The applicant intends to use this property for commercial development and commercial recreational purposes, such as baseball and softball fields. Opposed land use is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan and future land use map has this property categorized as residential potential. The C2 General Commercial District will be the most appropriate zoning district for commercial development and commercial commercial development and commercial recreation purposes. The governing body may make its recommendation and state its findings according to the criteria in section 27.040 listed in the memo, items eight through I. The planning commission recommended approval of the proposed rezoning plus after October 16th, 2025 meeting by unanimous vote. There are three alternatives before you today. One, the governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Two, the governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. And three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends the governing body adopt the planning commission's recommendation and approve its proposed ordinance. And there's no dissent for this.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on ordinance 3031-2025.
I move to approve ordinance number 3031-2025.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Also, just to be noted, the Commissioner Landgraf will be also stepping down on this item on the agenda as well.
Item 10D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from R3 Multi-Family Residential District to C2 General Commercial District for the property generally located north of the East Mary Street and Highway 156 intersection. If approved, this would be ordinance number 3032-2025. John?
H.J. Slender is requesting to rezone the property generally located north of the East Mary Street and Highway 156 intersection, from R3 Multiple Family Residential District to C2 General Commercial District. The property is currently vacant and contains 10.66 acres. This property is also part of the Starbong District. There are no current plans submitted for this property, however, the applicant intends to use this property for commercial development. The proposed land use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future, the comprehensive plan and future land use map has the property categorized as commercial potential. The C2 General Commercial District will be the most appropriate zoning district for commercial development. The governing body may make its recommendation and state its findings according to the criteria in section 27.040, items eight through I listed in the memo. The planning commission did recommend approval of the proposed ordinance at October 16th, 2025, planning commission by unanimous vote. There are three alternatives before you today. One, the governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Two, the governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. Three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends the governing body adopt the planning commission's recommendation and approve its proposed ordinance.
Any questions for John? Entertain a motion on ordinance 3032-2025 then.
Make the motion to approve ordinance number 3032-2025.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Either way.
Commissioner Nguyen made the second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll wait for Commissioner Landgraf to return to the bench.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a notice of acceptance for the infrastructure for Sunset Terrace Estates LLC Phase 1. Trent?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you today, it's acceptance of infrastructure. Sunset Terrace Estates LLC Phase 1, they completed their infrastructure on September 10th of 2025. The infrastructure was inspected by the city of Garden City to ensure the work was done in accordance with the requirements of the city and the development agreement, section 70-2-71301. Maintenance improvements required the subdivider or developer to maintain all required public improvements and subdivision until approvals are accepted by the governing body. At this time of acceptance is when the maintenance period will start. That date will be the, fact dated to the September 10th of 2025. The alternatives before you today, number one, the governing body may approve the notice of acceptance for Sunset Terrace LLC Phase 1. Alternative number two, the governing body may not approve the notice of acceptance for Sunset Terrace Estates LLC Phase 1, provide staff alternative direction, staff's recommendation. So the governing body may approve the notice of acceptance for Sunset Terrace Estates LLC Phase 1 and fiscal note, the ongoing maintenance and responsibilities that occur after the year maintenance period will be incorporated into the city's operating budget for street maintenance.
Any questions for Trent? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to reapprove the notice of acceptance for Sunset Terrace Estates LLC Phase 1.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve publishing a notice of budget hearing for amending the 2025 budget to reflect actual 2025 expenditures. The proposed date and time of the hearing is December 2nd, 2025, at 1:30 PM.
Hi, Jared.
Good afternoon. Throughout the year, city staff compares actual and estimated expenditures to the authorized budget. In some instances, due to changes in programs, cash carryover, and additional revenues, there is a need to amend the authorized budget. Proposed are the following funds to amend and the justification. You can see there's a handful of funds that we're adjusting, most of which are due to just additional cash carryover from each year. We anticipate spending down, for example, the capital reserve, the full balance of this year, but it's not going to happen till the next year. And it follows practice every year. Same thing with the FID of Trust. So most of those are just adjustments to the cash. However, some have additional expenses due to programming changes and things like that too. This agenda item would authorize the publication of a notice of budget hearing for these amendments, making them known in advance of the meeting to the public, so that they may be informed and have an opportunity to come speak to the city commission on the matter prior to you considering and adopting the amendments. So the alternatives before you today are that the governing body may approve publication of the notice of budget hearing for amending the 2025 budget, setting the time and date of the hearing for 1:30 PM on December 2nd, 2025, or the governing body may not approve the publication of the notice of budget hearing and provide further direction to staff. Staff recommends the governing body approve the publication of the notice of budget hearing for amending the 2025 budget, setting the time and date of the hearing for 1:30 PM, December 2nd, 2025. Happy to answer any questions.
Jared, we would need to take, change the location of the meeting to.
That's what I said.
Garden City High School. This is the meeting we're moving to.
Will do.
To Garden City High School, so something, something, something Buffalo Way Boulevard.
2720 Buffalo Way Boulevard.
Because we'll have a, you'll open the public hearing there at that location then?
Yeah, that's where we're having the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. That's where, that's where we need to have the notice to have everybody attend, if that's, that's, that's where we're going to be at, so.
Okay, I will make that change.
Any questions for Jared on this? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve publication of notice of budget hearing for amending the 2025 budget, setting the time and date of the hearing for 1:30 PM, December 2nd, 2025, with the suggested edits of location.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thank you. The govern, item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and provide direction to staff regarding adjusting the effective date of rate changes for the water and wastewater utility. Jared? Mike?
I'll.
Or all of you. In harmony.
Yeah.
The city of Garden City is finalizing a consolidated fee schedule that will incorporate the majority of fees collected and utilized by the city. The schedule will implement changes to current fees charged by the city with an effective date of January 1st, 2026. The intent is to review and revise the schedule at the end of each year, with adoption of any rate changes effective on January 1st. This allows for all rate changes to occur simultaneously and unifies the administration of such changes to one period each year. Utility rates for the city's electric, water, wastewater, stormwater, and solid waste utilities will not be included in the adoption of the fee schedule, as there are specific requirements to implement and change these rates that the adoption of the fee schedule would not satisfy. Currently, the electric and solid waste utilities have adopted rate schedules that include annual rate adjustments on January 1st. On March 4th, 2025, the governing body approved ordinance number 3008-2025, which established the water and wastewater rates beginning on April 1st, 2025, through March 31st, 2030. These rates were incorporated after a comprehensive study was conducted on the utilities' anticipated future costs. The rates incorporated an annual increase of 3% for water rates and 6% for wastewater rates through 2029, being incorporated on April 1st of each year. To better align all city rate changes, it is proposed that the effective date of the water and wastewater rate changes also occur on January 1st of each year. Potential considerations for this change are to adjust the rate changes currently planned for April 1st, 2026, to January 1st, 2026, or postpone those rate changes to January 1st, 2027. Historically, one of the reasons the water and wastewater rates have utilized an April 1 effective date is due to the annual calculation of the wastewater rate being dictated from the average usage in December, January, and February. Since these are the months most likely to not include irrigation usage, staff calculate the new monthly cost for each account's wastewater usage based on the average usage across these months. These calculations occur in February and March, and the new monthly cost is implemented in the April billing, utilizing the updated monthly average usage calculation and the new rate. With consideration of a change to a January 1 implementation date, staff consider the impacts on the wastewater calculation. Shifting the calculation of the average usage to September, October, and November would likely result in higher calculations due to the likelihood of irrigation use still occurring. Staff also consider the possibility of updating monthly costs on accounts in January, using the new effective rate and the current average usage calculation, and then updating the monthly cost again, the new rate, and the new average calculation in March. However, the process of calculating and updating accounts with the proper wastewater monthly cost is a manual process and very time-intensive, and carrying out the process twice in a short timeframe is not ideal. Customers would also experience changes, changes to this rate twice a year instead of once a year, as is the current practice. After consideration of the different factors regarding changing the effective date of the wastewater rate, staff determined that the suggested course of action is to utilize a January 1 effective date for all rates for continuity, but indicate that the wastewater rate is not incorporated until the new calculations from average water usage in December, January, and February can be compiled. Therefore, the new rate and updated average usage will still be calculated in February and March of each year and take effect on the first bill after that calculation is completed. This way, customers will continue to have a consistent monthly wastewater cost across 12 months, as they have in the past. To adjust the effective date of the rate change to January 1st, 2026, the city would experience an increase in revenue in the water and wastewater fund above what was anticipated due to three additional months of the effective increase. The adjustment to the water rate would result in a 3% increase in anticipated revenues during January through March over what was anticipated. These months generally are some of the lower months of usage of the water utility, and additional revenue is anticipated to be approximately $50,000. Staff does not expect any significant increases in the wastewater revenue due to the implementation of the updated monthly rate still taking effect in March or April, as it does now. If the rate changes were to be pushed back to January 1st, 2027, the city would experience a decrease in anticipated revenues. The wastewater utility would anticipate a decrease of approximately $200,000, and the water utility would experience a decrease between approximately $250,000 and $300,000. With the governing body's direction today, staff will prepare an ordinance to effectuate the changes to the current rate change schedule and adjust the effective date of future rate changes to January 1st, 2026, or January 1st, 2027, instead of April 1st, 2026. The alternatives before you today are that the governing body may direct a change to the effective date of water and wastewater utility rates from April 1st, 2026 to January 1st, 2026, and each January 1 thereafter through January 1st, 2029. The governing body may direct a change to the effective date of water and wastewater utility rates from April 1st, 2026 to January 1st, 2027, and each January 1 thereafter through January 1st, 2030, or the governing body may direct a change different than alternative one or two. Staff recommends the governing body direct a change to the effective date of water and wastewater utility rates from April 1st, 2026 to January 1st, 2026, and each January thereafter through January 1st, 2029. As a fiscal note, it's anticipated that an adjustment to the rates to January 1st, 2026 would have a minimal overall effect on projected revenues of the utility and result in approximately $50,000 in increased revenue. It's anticipated that an adjustment to January 1st, 2027 would likely result in an overall decrease in projected revenues of approximately $450,000 to $500,000.
Any questions for Jared? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we address, direct the change to effective dates of the water and wastewater utility rates from April 1st, 2026 to January 1st, 2026, and each January 1 thereafter through January 1st, 2029.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item?
I, I just have a question. So through 2029, is there a reason just to, like, does it end that term? Or like, do we, like, the governing body in 2029, they'd come back?
So that's what was already adopted. So when you adopted the water waste rate, it was for five years.
Oh, gotcha, right.
And so there's just a line for taking what was already adopted and just shifting that implementation date to either January 1st, 26, or January 37, and then following that same plan, that was what we used to do.
Thanks.
I do appreciate the minimal effect of the $50,000 and then, but again, the loss in revenue and our goal to keep these solvent and be able to move forward to make progress, I understand. So I really appreciate all the research that you've, you've done. Thanks.
Any other questions for Jared on this? All in favor, say aye then.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the purchase of one new wheel loader for $165,263.45 from Central Power Systems. Mike?
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. The street department has a 2006 Komatsu WA 250 wheel loader that has surpassed its useful life. It has 13,688 hours and over 44,951 miles on it. And it has undergone several major repairs totaling over $80,000 just in the last five years. It was recently taken to the repair shop for a new control valve costing $6,000 was going to be needed, but wasn't available until early spring of 2026. Staff was able to locate a used control valve for $2,200, and they will install it on the loader this next week. However, there's a concern that even after replacing the control valve, other major repairs will likely be needed. The loader is estimated to be worth only about $15,000. So due to the critical nature of this equipment, staff determined it's important to replace it as soon as possible due to the possibility of the current equipment becoming inoperable. To expedite the timeline for potential replacement, staff reached out and obtained four quotes from the local vendors for a new loader that we would anticipate would have been potential bidders in the informal bidding process if we'd have used that. However, staff did not advertise in the local newspaper for two weeks as required with the formal bid process for this large of an expenditure. All four quotes received meet or exceed minimum specifications required. The lowest quote provided is from Central Power Supply for $165,263.45, which includes a three-year, 3,000-hour service maintenance plan. Staff is advising the governing body that this was not advertised in the local newspaper for two weeks as required with the formal bid process, but staff believe an expedited acquisition process is in the best interest of the city with the totality of this specific circumstance. And if approved today, staff will proceed with the purchase of the equipment that is expected to be delivered in two weeks. There's the list of the four vendors that we contacted. Your alternatives today are the governing body may authorize the purchase of a wheel loader from Central Power Systems for $165,263.45, or the governing body may choose not to authorize the purchase of this equipment. Staff recommends governing body authorize purchase of a wheel loader from Central Power Systems for $165,263.45. Fiscal note on this is that funding for this purchase will come from Special Trafficway, New Equipment Streets with the GL code there. This item was not anticipated in the budget for 2025 and will exceed the budget allocation for this line, which has a remaining balance of $5,691.67. This purchase will draw from the cash balance of the Special Trafficway Fund. The fund has experienced revenues above what was budgeted in the 2025 fiscal year due to repayment of a cost of the 2024 general obligation bond projects that were expensed from this fund in 2024, but were reimbursed in 2025. These additional revenues amounted to $414,000. The cash position of the fund is currently $1,988,671, which is $4,032,707 higher than the 2025 starting cash balance of $1,555,964. So even with the purchase of this equipment, it is anticipated that the cash position, the cash position of the fund will be higher at the end of 2024. And we're happy to answer any questions on that. I realize that's a lot of information.
Any questions for Mike?
So Mike, the, the cost, the low bid was $165,263.45, and you're subtracting, if you subtract the, the. the, what it's worth, of about $15,000, that comes to about $150,263 roughly. And then, so with the spend down of the, did you say $5,691 of the remaining budget for this year?
Correct.
So that brings it back, that brings it down to about 144 of unallocated budgeted numbers that we didn't allocate for this purchase, correct?
Correct, assuming that we get $15,000 for it.
Sure.
Whatever that number would be.
Sure.
Yes. And more than likely, we would put this loader, we would sell this loader on Purple Way. So you'd get higher bids for that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
I have a question for Jared that I probably should have asked last Friday, given we just did the budget amendment notice of public hearing, is Jared in the room?
He's coming.
I think he's coming this way.
Yeah, that was my question too.
This is a, this is a fund where we budget the entire cash balance, so there's, even though we're exceeding the budget line item, the budget authority that the commission has to make an extraordinary purchase like this was already baked into the adoption of the 2025 budget.
Like 800,000 cushion, it won't impact the need for an amended budget on this item.
So you won't have to add it?
Correct, this should be fine, because the anticipated cash carryover is budgeted for, and so the authority is well above what we anticipate this year actually being, even with this purchase.
Okay, gotcha.
Thanks, Drew.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move we authorize the purchase of a wheel loader from Central Power Systems for
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12E, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a service agreement with Wheatland Electric Cooperative, Inc.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, in January of 2020, I'm sorry, in January of 2018, the City of Garden City and Wheatland Electric Cooperative were given specific instructions from the Kansas Corporation Commission following extensive limitation on utility service territory relative to all utility services being provided by each utility. However, two service locations were missed and would have been otherwise been impacted at the time of the KCC order. The agreement before you today is to memorialize the service as it relates to those two locations, and that neither the city nor Wheatland shall seek damages from the other for the improper service outside their appropriate electric service territory. The two locations are the City's Jarmer Well, the City's Jarmer Water Well located at East Highway 50, which the city currently serves, and the other is a gas well located at 33 South Highway 83 presently served by Wheatland Electric. Your alternatives, the governing body may authorize the mayor to sign this agreement between the city and Wheatland Electric Cooperative, or number two, the governing body may choose not to allow the mayor to sign this agreement between the city and Wheatland Electric, and there is no fiscal impact to the city on this by approving this agreement today. I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions for Mike on this item? Entertain a motion on this item, then.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the service agreement between the city and Wheatland Electric Cooperative, Inc.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve seven appointments to the Building Safety Board of Appeals.
All right, Mayor Commissioners, so today we've got the Building Safety Board of Appeals, a seven-member board made up of a licensed master plumber, a master electrician, a licensed master mechanical, licensed residential contractor, licensed commercial contractor, an architect licensed in the state of Kansas, and one at-large citizen. The term limits on this board have become inconsistent with having members that are up for reappointment every year. As a result, staff is proposing the following membership on the Building Safety Board of Appeals with the identified term limits noted below. Each member with the exception of Scott Geier would be requesting a waiver to serve an additional term as they have already been on the board for two or more terms. So below in that chart there, we've got Harvey Brungart, who's a master plumber, Scott Geier, a master electrician, Matt Lee, a commercial contractor, David Germin, a residential contractor, Sam McMillan, a master mechanical, Desiree Miller, a licensed architect, and Blair Loving, a citizen at large. Roger Enru, a licensed master electrician, has previously served in the capacity of licensed master electrician but expressed interest in getting off the board should another licensed master electrician apply to serve on the board. Mr. Geier submitted an application to fill that role. The following applicants have expressed interest in serving on the board. Scott Geier, a master electrician, Elvin Madrid, licensed residential contractor. And Tyson Brand, citizen at large. Alternatives before you today, the governing body may provide a waiver for terms to reappoint Harvey Brungart to a term ending December 31, 2026, Matt Lee, David Germin, and Sam McMillan to a term ending in December 31, 2027, Desiree Miller and Blair Loving to a term ending December 31, 2028, and appoint Scott Geier to serve a term ending December 31, 2026. Alternative number two, the governing body may not approve the appointments to the Building Safety Board of Appeals and provide an alternative direction to staff. Recommendation, staff recommends the governing body provide a waiver for terms to reappoint Harvey Brungart to the term ending December 31, 2026, Matt Lee, David Germin, and Sam McMillan to a term ending December 31, 2027, Desiree Miller and Blair Loving to a term ending December 31, 2028, and appoint Scott Geier to serve a term ending December 31, 2026. There is no fiscal impact to the city by appointing members to serve on the Building Safety Board of Appeals.
Any questions for Trent on this item?
Just a grammar question, so is it provide and approve, or because I think provided is like just offered to them to do that same, carry the same weight as giving them a waiver and also approving that waiver for them to extend those terms?
Providing the reappointment of them to those positions and the new appointment of Scott Geier.
Cool.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item. I'll make a motion that we approve alternative 1 for the recommendation of the terms and people that are recommended to serve on the board as presented.
Second.
Is there a second? There is a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Item 12G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve appointments to the Holcomb Garden City Finney County Area Planning Commission.
Mayor Commissioners, the Holcomb Garden City Finney County Area Planning Commission is a nine-member board that consists of four city members, three county members, one Holcomb member, and one at-large member. Shannon Dick serves as a city member, and his term is set to expire December 31, 2025. Shannon has filled a previous member's position and would like to serve a whole term. This is a three-year term that will start January 1, 2026 and expire December 31, 2028. The following residents, in no particular order, have applied and expressed interest in serving on the board as well for Garden City representatives. Shannon Dick, John Griffin, Patrick Garcia, Renaldo Mesa, and Tim Hannigan. Tim Hannigan currently serves as the at-large member. His term is set to expire December 31, 2025. The at-large member can be from any of the three jurisdictions. Should the governing body choose to appoint an at-large member, the applicant would need to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners and the City of Holcomb. The following members, in addition to those listed above, could be considered as the at-large member. Sidney Unger, Jocelyn, and Semrio, and Abby Frango. Your alternatives today are the governing body may approve appointments to the Holcomb Garden City Finney County Area Planning Commission, the governing body may not approve appointments to the Holcomb Garden City Finney County Area Planning Commission, or the governing body may provide an alternative direction to staff. Staff recommends the governing body reappoint Shannon Dick to a three-year term to the Holcomb Garden City Finney County Area Planning Commission for the Garden City seat, and reappoint Tim Hannigan for a three-year term for the at-large member. There is no fiscal impact, and then attached are the applications for reference.
Any questions?
Did it, I have one, did the terms rotate at all, or are they fixed for like the at-large? Is it always a three-year?
It's always a three-year.
Okay.
He deserved a one-year term to fill the last.
To fill, okay, that's what I was, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve the recommendations as presented.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
We're ready for the consent agenda item. If nobody wants to remove any of these to discuss separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve consent agenda items 13A through 13H.
Just checking if there's anybody from the community to discuss any of the nuisance items that are on the consent agenda. None being, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda 13A through H. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second to the motion, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. There's no other business, on to commission reports. Commissioner Enru.
So I just want to say thank you to the staff for the pre-meeting, it was really interesting. You know, anytime you're looking at progress reports or reports that you're trying to improve, there's always lots of interpretations, and I think the discussion between the city staff and then also the discussion from the city manager really helped identify that, I love one phrase that Matt used, he said 27 departments but one city. And I really appreciate this idea that we're one city working together, I mean, we are a standout city here in Western Kansas, and I think many people see us as leaders, and so the thing that's really great about Garden City is that we're working harder and more diligently to make sure that we make the best use of tax dollars. And so I really appreciate the way that our city is moving forward to really say how can we get better and have that intentional focus to be better as a city and a community. I know there's lots of activities, November, December are filled with places and things to do, so if you say there's nothing to do in Garden City, please look at the meetings of note or all the opportunities, because this is a really exciting time. I'm really excited about that, I keep anticipating the meeting at the high school, that is something we've never done before, so I think it's going to be very unique, it's going to be very exciting. I'm really looking forward to just the participation, hopefully of a lot of the student body, and so being off-location will also put the commissioners a little bit, you know, we'll have to be on our A-game also, so it's going to be a really great meeting. I also want to say thank you to the first responders, I know that many people are, you know, this time of the year, there's lots of going on, and with the shortening of hours, there's lots of things happening, and so I know our first responders are out there protecting each and every one of us. I would not want to be a firefighter or policeman in the middle of the night anytime there's water or cold involved, but I just wanted to say thank you. And I also do want to say also to the EMS that they thought enough of Finney County EMS to really include the city as, because again, I think they're a vital part of what happens here. So I know that I've been recently walking in the parks, and it's been really nice and cool and crisp. Our parks are, I just want to say thank you to the Parks Department, they are looking absolutely fabulous, and I know that you've done a lot of work to keep them up, and so just enjoy the holiday. October came and went, and so the same thing will happen with November, so I just want to say thank you to the residents of Garden City. Remember, today is voting all the way until 7 o'clock PM, so get out there and exercise your right to vote.
Commissioner Langrath.
So I just want to repeat what Commissioner Enru said on the pre-meeting, I think the performance measurement is good being able to talk about that and being able to provide feedback, and also hear your feedback from staff as well. Also, just wanted to bring up, I saw on social media that the city of Cimarron started their first-ever youth leadership advisory board made up of local youth leaders. I think something similar to that would be a good idea for Garden City as well, might not have to be exactly like an advisory board, but I think having something where youth leadership can provide feedback to the city and also the city can provide some information and leadership experience to these youth as well would be something very important, so I just kind of wanted to bring that up to the board, something to potentially look into.
Commissioner Win.
Yeah, first, congratulations to Cory for completing her CCMFPA certification. Kind of adds some status also, the fact that we have a lot of talented and qualified people working for our organization, which translates very well into our performance metric, and like the big common theme that I was seeing with our discussion was that the performance metric itself has this nature of stirring this purpose within each individual for our organization. I think that allows us to serve our community better when all of us are actively performing a role that makes us feel like we have a purpose in it, because it's more than just, oh, this is a job, this is, this is a service not just to the people I interact with, but also to this growing community that we have. And I was very appreciative that I got a good kick and a good laugh out of the social media Halloween activities, festivities that we had, to see that our staff are so willing to have fun and be joyful in the midst of working so hard, so yeah, I'm appreciative of that.
All right, Commissioner Oates.
All right, thank you. I'd like to talk first to Mrs. Bernfin's class for a second, so thank you for coming. First off, I apologize, I didn't, I didn't get to see you a couple weeks ago, I attended a best friend's funeral, so thanks to my fellow commissioners for filling in for me. I just want you to kind of take in the importance that it is to kind of fill in the shoes that we have to fill up here with some of the ideas and directions that you may have in the future, so, but I just would like to say thanks for coming, and hopefully you took good notes, and I just hope that I could see you up here sometime in the future when you're ready to kind of fill in those shoes. Also with that, I do thank the community members on coming in and speaking on behalf of some of their efforts and what they would like to see in some changes and some requests that they have asked for from us here at, in, you know, in City Commission, so starting off with Tammy Wilson on the Big Brothers Big Sisters, I think is, it would probably be important for us to take a consensus on whether do we want to go back and revisit that, maybe not in the sense of what we've already approved on the AFAC funding, but maybe there's some way or some form that we can find that maybe assist in that, in that ask for them to continue their help in the younger community groups around Garden City, so also thank you for Emily Hamlin for coming in, talking about her efforts to, you know, continue teaching youth and engaging them in the workforce on what's needed here in the community, and then congratulations on Cory as well for achieving her success in her four years, so I wish I could do the same, it's coming up, taking classes right now, but hopefully I can graduate soon. But yeah, I'd also like to talk about what's going on in the community as far as what, obviously, the fellow commissioners have talked about and spoke about being on social media. I have not, I have disconnected myself from social media just to kind of try to gauge what I could, you know, hear from outside of that, and it's still pretty busy, you still hear about through just conversations or talking to other people about what's coming up, or listening to the city commission or the county commission on what's coming up to kind of get engaged and stay engaged, and so that was kind of a unique, I think after, after I'm done here with the city commission, I'll probably find myself back on Facebook, so, but watch out, I'll have a lot, I'll be dumping photos and stuff, no, I'm kidding. But yeah, just, you know, with sports in general, I did, I did go to Topeka on Monday to watch the soccer team, the boys' soccer team, and those guys, those, those young men, they had the best season in their history of soccer with a record of 15-2-1, and it's kind of ironic because they had to go to, to the eastern part of the state to play in the western bracket, so we, we lost 5-1, but those kids, I commend them and their coaches on the efforts and their season, on what they succeeded, and I just want to, I want to name each one of them because I think, I know it's not, I mean, for me, it's important just because we all have kids who succeed and they don't, sorry, they don't get the praise like they, they think they deserve, and it doesn't have to deal with just sports, it doesn't have to deal with just the successes that we have with just a short season, in everyone's life, they go through something, and I want to take this opportunity to thank Dylan Martinez, Kelby Joseph, Kenley Pierre, Jefferson Maltese, Jesus Dizal, Thomas Perez, Diego Padilla, Padilla. Diego Padilla, Gilberto Castro Jr., Saul Ortega, Alexander Martinez, Jared Meister, German Fermin Velasquez, Carlos Guerrero Jr., Nestor Reyes, Monzor, Quasi, Neameki, Davidson Chirilis, Jesús Cervantes, Hutrión, Olson, I'm going to mess up you guys' names, I'm sorry, I apologize, Olson Jean, Alexander Chavez Calderon, Justin Diaz, and Giovanni Rodriguez Leba, along with their head coach, Jose Caro, and assistant coach Juan Ramos and Valeria Rascón and Manuel Guzman. These people put an awesome team together, and their commitment to just play hard on the field shows their courage and strength, and I just, I hope they're listening so that they can put that effort into the community as well as with their classes, their successes in life, and to just continue that, that urge to, to compete and battle and move forward to become the great people that they are. So with that, that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just wanted to follow up on kind of what the other commissioners talked about. It was a very good pre-meeting today on the information that we received, really trying to move our organization forward and become more efficient on, on how we look at our jobs and the people that are working and trying to set those parameters, so, and a lot of good communication, too. I think what really came out of the meeting is if our departments communicate together, we work more efficiently, so, but a very good pre-meeting. I attended the Garden City Career Connections Academy ribbon cutting last week, it's another great addition to the college and the community, and part of, we are funding part of that through the city, and then also it's a great addition to the, to the college, so, great event. Attended the People's Listening Tour with the governor, she is out and about in the state of Kansas with Director Adam Proffitt, who's the Kansas Budget Director, and they were in town last week at the high school getting input on the governor's budget, so I attended that. A lot of good insight for the governor during that meeting. I attended the Sales Tax Oversight Committee meeting yesterday, and a lot of good reporting on where we're at with the sales tax on, for the sales tax initiatives, got a quick overview of Fire Station 3 and kind of the wrap-up on that, and then some information on kind of a direction that the Oversight Committee would recommend to the governing body, but we're going to take that up in another meeting, and then hopefully present a recommendation to the governing body, but I won't spill the beans on that one yet. Another good sales tax report that we saw in the reports, and just remember to shop local and fly local. Just wanted to kind of follow up on what Commissioner Ortiz was saying, that we did have a report, and I know it was a lengthy discussion at our last commission meeting that Commissioner Ortiz wasn't at, but is there a will or that the commission would like to look at, any additional funding or any opportunities? I know that we didn't fully fund all of the agencies during that last round, didn't know if we wanted to make an emergency type of funding or anything, but something to think about.
I mean, I think the hard thing is there are a lot of organizations on that list, and so, I mean, it's, it's hard to single one out, and I understand, Big Brothers and Big Sisters, years ago, I was part of it, and I, and I understand the value, and so it's really hard to do that. I mean, I'd like to investigate like this funding, where does it take them, and then, you know, I did look a little bit into their short-term and long-term, but I want to make sure I understand that they have a plan moving forward. I really appreciate the community members coming up front and talking about that, but I, I think the danger is if you don't open back up the grant process and give people a chance to apply. We do have AFAC funds that are sitting there, I know that we could actually allocate and they could reapply, but, I mean, I know it's a quick turnaround, but I think that, I don't know what's really fair, so that's, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on that?
I'll kind of go ahead and take you back, kind of, I mean, I think it, I think it's an actionary, I guess, process that we need to have with that, it's, it is kind of an emergency, this, this is kind of something different than what the applicants put into, although they did put an application for that AFAC funding, but I don't want to see an organization like that who, who is involved in the community and, and passionate about serving these, these students and, and who struggle, that's, that's their passion, too, that's that they want to get out there and, and help these kids succeed, and I don't want to be a cause or, or lack thereof, a lack in their process to keep their doors open.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. What I would be open to is potentially placing an item for discussion on our next agenda, or whatever agenda is convenient or practical, to open that discussion publicly and be able to, I, if the body decides to make a decision, it does, if it doesn't, at least there's a specific opportunity for us to talk about it.
I am just a little bit worried about doing that, though, because they said if they don't have funding by November 15th, they're done, and our next meeting would be November 18th, so it'd be kind of a three-day...
Well, they said they wouldn't be able to make payroll, but, but I think process and protocol are very important.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, process and protocol for the city commission are very important, and in funding a one-off, even though this is an important organization and all of that, I think the one-off is hard in the sense that if you don't have a protocol, again, these decisions, I mean, they last far past all of us, so this, if we don't follow a process and a protocol, I think we have to be very careful about making these one-time funding, so.
And that was one of the discussion points at our last meeting on following, you know, there was a lot of discussion on what, what the committee presented and kind of, and then kind of what we came up with, so it would probably be a good discussion point to bring probably something up at the next meeting, to have it, an action item on the next agenda. Okay, thank you for the discussion and allowing for that, that during the comment. Finally, I just, just want to remind everybody to go vote today. Polls, like Commissioner Enru said, that are open until 7:00. This really does give everyone a voice on how our community does move forward, so please remember to go out and vote. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.